Good morning, ladies. It's actually afternoon for me and it's afternoon on Thursday, January 21st. So I'm taping two lessons this week. And John Ray, you need to thank him when you see him because he does a lot at this church and even beyond to help people. So he's been helping the Women's Bible Study in doing this recording. And today, let me pray and let's get started. Dear Lord, thank you for accompanying us through this study, through this book, through your word to us to encourage us not to bring us to despair over the images we see in this book and even today, but to enlighten us about your plans for us, your promise to us, and your presence with us. For it's in Christ's name we do pray, amen. So I doubt any of you woke up this morning and thought about the end of the world. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe some of you started the day like that, but most of us start our day by thoughts about what's before us. If you have a baby at home, maybe you don't even have time for that, that you respond to a cry, or if you've got errands to run, if you've got other people in the house that have needs and you're called upon. But most of us start the day with some idea, even in brief form, about what that day holds, what we're being called on to do. So today, this morning started out with my knowledge of things I had to accomplish before 1 o'clock and then those things I needed to accomplish after about 2:30 and those things I was looking forward to tonight. But the chapter today, chapter 14 of Revelation, is going to call us to look at a different focal point. And for most of us, it's not going to be a welcome look at that, but even in this chapter, you have gotten used to the idea that in Revelation, God never leaves us without hope. And we're going to see it in this chapter as well. So I've decided to approach it a little bit differently, just for time's sake, and I'm not going to read the entire chapter. Once I'm going to read a section, then we'll talk about that section and then we'll move on to the next section. And in this chapter, we have three different sections. And the first section is we see the saints again, the place of the saints, and that's verses 1 through 5. And then we're going to see the message of three angels, three different angels. That's verses 6 through 13. And then we're going to look at the judgment. That's what I'm talking about. Who wants to look at the judgment? But actually, the judgment, the final judgment brings an incredible promise to reality for us. So it shouldn't be something that we object to considering. So we'll look at those three different sections each. And then I want to place this in the whole book of Revelation. So to begin with, between the sixth and the seventh seal, remember the seals and then the trumpets. And next lesson, we're going to be looking at the seven bowls. So these are progressive elements of pictures of judgment. And you can imagine when we get to the seven bowls, they're going to be poured out on the earth. We have reached it. We have reached the final judgment. These others, we get almost there, but then it's pulled back. And this time, it's going to be full steam on. But between the sixth and seventh seal, we have this interlude, and it was of the 144,000. And it was from Revelation 7, 2 through 4. Let me read that for us. "Then I saw another angel coming up from the east, having the seal of the living God. He called out in a loud voice to the four angels who had been given power to harm the land and the sea." Remember, that's what was happening with the sixth seal. There were those four angels that were about to act. And this angel says, "Do not harm the land or the sea or the trees until we put a seal on the foreheads of the servants of our God." Then I heard the number of those who were sealed, 144,000, from all the tribes of Israel. And so that has much to do with what we're going to see in the first verses of chapter 14. So now, let me read those verses. "Then I looked, and there before me was the Lamb standing on Mount Zion, and with him 144,000, who had his name and his father's name written on their foreheads." Now I'm going to stop after that verse to compare that with what we saw in the very last lesson, which was the name of the mark or the number of the mark of the beast, either on the foreheads or on the forehand of those who followed the beast. You can see we're talking about two different ends of the population, those who believe and who follow the Lamb and those who reject the Lamb and follow the beast. And so here, we're looking at those who follow the Lamb. They've been sealed in the Lamb. And remember, this sealing was the giving of the Holy Spirit. It's not a literal name on the forehead. It is the sealing of the Holy Spirit. God's people are protected. And so we continue, verse 2, chapter 14. "And I heard a sound from heaven, like the roar of rushing waters and like a loud peal of thunder." These sounds should not surprise us. We've heard them before in the book of Revelation and even on Mount Sinai, when the law was given, the peals of thunder. "The sound I heard was like that of harpist playing their harps. And they sang a new song before the throne and before the four living creatures and the elders. No one could learn the song except the 144,000 who had been redeemed from the earth." Notice the verb there, "had been redeemed from the earth." And so we're talking about a vision of these 144,000 standing before the throne, because here we see, "They sang a new song before the throne and before..." Remember, these four creatures and the 24 elders, which we saw in chapters 4 and 5. So we're back in the throne room that was introduced in chapter 4. And the 144,000 now are there. They were not there before, but now the vision that John sees, they are there in the throne room. Then this is said, which is a little bit confusing, so we've got to unwind it. "These are those," that is, the 144,000, "these are those who did not defile themselves with women, for they kept themselves pure. They followed the Lamb wherever he goes. They were purchased from among men and offered his first fruits to God and the Lamb. No lie was found in their mouths; they are blameless." So here, we are wondering, well, what is this, these 144,000 who did not defile themselves with women? Sounds like it's speaking of sexual purity. So are only men being talked about here? Who are these men then? Does it include women? In other words, the 144,000 symbolized in the previous chapter, chapter 7, and now shown up here, included both men and women. Remember, they were called the 12 tribes, but we saw that the description of the tribes did not fit the traditional description. And so we said, these are the people of God, the church of God, both Old Testament and New Testament. And so what possible meaning could it have unless we're not talking about sexual purity? But sexual purity equals, in this metaphor, spiritual purity. Those who have not given in to the beast, those who are not worshiping the beast, those who have not given in to that temptation, who have not been deceived and who are not following the beast, but who have kept themselves pure by following the Lamb. And notice that very next verse says, "They follow the Lamb wherever he goes." So they're identified in this passage in four ways. They're pure. In other words, they've resisted the temptations. And I'm not saying absolute 100% resistance of temptation, because we know that no one save Jesus has reached that. And so, but their intention, the track of their life is one of following, calling upon God's help, because he does offer, Hebrews says, a way of escape when we are faced with temptations. So they're identified by their purity, by the fact they follow the Lamb, by the fact that they are the first fruits given to God, and that they are blameless. And so this is how they're identified. Let's unpack that a little. I've already dealt with sexual purity. And for the women, because I'm speaking to women, except John is in the room, but you know, sometimes, even St. Augustine made much of the temptation that women presented to men. And so even in church history, it's sort of like women are portrayed as the temptress. And certainly, there's biblical verses that would give way to that. But also, let's talk about it in this book. Even in the book of Revelation, we have four predominant women. And we see one in those letters to the churches, Jezebel, who is leading people astray in the church, whether she's a specific woman or whether it's the spirit of Jezebel that is alive in that church. But Jezebel is one of the women in the book of Revelation. The second one, we looked at in chapter 12, the woman who was birthing the male child. Remember? And certainly, she was not leading people astray. In fact, God took her in the wilderness, remember, to protect her. And she symbolizes the church. So in that instance, that woman does not symbolize somebody who's tempting and leading somebody astray. Then we're going to see in chapter 17 and following, we're going to see the great prostitute called Babylon. And that is someone who tempts, and I read verses from chapter 17 last week. And so that is somebody who leads astray. But the final woman is in chapter 19, the bride of the Lamb. It's the church again. It's the same symbol as the woman who is birthing the male child. So here, we see, you can't characterize all women as temptress. And even the book of Revelation as a whole argues against a certain interpretation of what is meant in this chapter about staying sexual purity, equalizing it to spiritual purity. They are followers of the Lamb. Jesus says, "Anyone who does not take his cross and follow me is not worthy of me." So he invites us to follow him. And John 10:4, it says this, "His sheep follow him, because they know his voice." And I want to stop just a minute to ask us all, including myself, which I've done in studying this. Do you recognize his voice? Can you identify it as something different from the counterfeit? Remember the one, the Lamb, who looks like a lamb? He has two horns, but he speaks like the dragon. He speaks like the beast. And can you identify when you hear the beast or Satan's voice versus God's voice? Sometimes in even commercials, it's pictured as a devil standing on one shoulder as opposed to an angel standing on another shoulder. But do you know his voice? Do you listen to him? I get tickled, because everybody seems to know my voice, even if I don't leave my name. And it's because my voice is probably decibels lower than most women. And it's sort of raw and scratchy at times. So people usually know when I'm speaking. I can recognize people's voices. But back to the question, do you know his voice? Do you listen to him enough? We need to move towards that. Then we're represented as the first fruits. This could mean two different things. One, the first fruits were usually, in Jewish history, recognized at the feast of the harvest. And so they would bring the first years of corn and they would consecrate them to God as a representation of all that was going to follow in the harvest. But it could mean that here, that these are the first fruits. But it's the 144,000, so it could also mean the whole harvest that has now been reaped. And so we are represented as the first fruits. We are called to be blameless, truth, honesty, integrity. I was struck, so because I'm recording today, the inauguration was yesterday, and the new press secretary was telling their expectations to the media of what they could anticipate from her. And it was truth. We live in an age where there is no absolute truth in the culture out there. Of course, there is in the church. We have truth. And Jesus was the truth. And then God's word, as given to us, is the truth. But people who follow the Lamb, who are included in this 144,000, are people of truth, of honesty, of integrity. We need to practice that in our own lives and even in our resistance to the lies of Satan, when they crop in our own heads against ourselves and especially against other people. So these are the people of God that are standing and they're singing a new song. A new song finds itself in the Old Testament. A number of Psalms specifically start with words, a new song to the Lord. And so we're singing a new song. But even in the book of Revelation, the new song, let me see where I put that. Let me just go back to it. There was a new song in chapter 5. And this is, it was, "The four living creatures and the 24 elders were bowing down, and they were singing this new song." So listen to this new song, chapter 5, this is verse 9. "You are worthy to take the scroll and to open its seals, because you were slain; and with your blood you purchased men for God, from every tribe and language and people and nation. You made them to be a kingdom and priests, to serve our God, and they will reign on the earth." So what is being spoken about is the people of God are made to be a kingdom and priest. Now we have the priests in this scene in chapter 14. We have the priests, the 144,000, standing before the throne, and they are singing a new song. You know, as we learn and experience more and more of Christ, there are always going to be new songs. And even in one of the Psalms, I think it is Psalm 89. Let me see where I put it. It's all these, I can't find itself, but it says that the Lord calls forth praise continually, forever. And so if we're going to be singing forever, I bet you, we're going to have new songs, even in heaven itself. Now, let's move to the next part of this chapter, and it's the message. We're going to see a message from three angels. "Then I saw another angel flying in midair." Flying in midair means, when he speaks, it's heard all over. So it's a loud voice, it's heard all over, everybody hears it. "Then I saw another angel flying in midair, and he had the eternal gospel to proclaim to those who live on earth, to every nation, tribe, language, and people." Remember, I just read those words from chapter 5, and we see them a number of times in the book of Revelation, sometime referring to redeemed humanity that are from every nation, tribe, language, and people, and sometimes referring to those who are unredeemed, who are from all those places. He said in a loud voice, so this is what everybody's going to hear. "Fear God and give him glory, because the hour of his judgment has come. Worship him who made the heavens, the earth, the sea, and the springs of water." And so here, he's calling for repentance, basically. You who are there on earth, who have not bowed your knee and praised the one and only true God, the one who made the heavens, the earth, the sea, and the springs of water, now is your chance. Bow down, repent, fear him. And so he's speaking to that. Now, why does he say, "the heavens, the earth, the sea, and the springs of water"? If you remember back to both the seals, the seven seals and the seven trumpets, when we began to see judgment, what parts of the creation were touched? It was those four parts, the heavens, remember, stars fell out of the sky, planets went bizarre, turned black, the earth, the sea, and then the freshwater streams, all those four. So we're talking about worshiping the God of creation. "A second angel followed and said, 'Fallen, fallen is Babylon the Great, which made all the nations drink the maddening wine of her adulteries.'" Before I move on to the third angel, then let's look, "fallen, fallen." Why repeat words? Often, we say, "holy, holy, holy is the Lord God." And it's in Hebrew and in other languages, there's not this exclamation point. And so to exclaim, you have to repeat the words. So take it that way. This is an exclamatory remark. "Fallen, fallen is Babylon the Great, which made all the nations drink the maddening wine of her adulteries." Here, this sexual purity, remember, is representing a spiritual purity, that Babylon, she's going to be called the prostitute or the whore later in the chapter. And it's going to be characterized as Rome, but really, it's characterized as all those entities, those governments sometimes, but the things we talked about last time, calling for the worship of the beast. And now we're seeing that she's fallen. It's falling. We're moving towards judgment. It's the final judgment is coming, and it's in view. And the angels are warning of that. "The third angel followed them and said in a loud voice, 'If anyone worships the beast and his image and receives his mark on the forehead or on the hand, he too will drink of the wine of God's fury, which has been poured full strength into the cup of his wrath. He will be tormented with burning sulfur in the presence of the holy angels of the Lamb, and the smoke of their torment rises forever and ever.'" This is eternal damnation, eternal punishment. There's no relief. There is no rest, day or night, for those who worship the beast and his image, or for anyone who receives the mark of his name. This calls for patient endurance on the part of the saints, who obey God's commandments and remain faithful to Jesus. "Then I heard a voice from heaven." That's what's coming next. But let's look at this third angel. What he's saying again is, you know, it's coming. It's been promised. If anyone worships the beast, not God the Creator, God, Christ the Redeemer, and the Spirit, this is what awaits you, the cup of God's fury. Let's talk about that a minute. Remember, and I've got these verses written here, but it is very clear that I can't follow my notes, because I'm too involved with you. But so I'm going from memory, and it may not be exact verses. But remember, when Jesus was in the Garden of Gethsemane, what did he pray? And what did he tell his disciples to do? He asked them to pray, "Stay awake, pray with me." And later, he came back and he said, "Are you still sleeping?" And he said, "Pray, so that you won't fall into temptation." And of course, very shortly after that, Peter fell into temptation, and he was denying Jesus. Thankfully, the Lord restored him. He repented, and he was restored by Jesus. This is what is being said. There's going to come a time when there's no longer any time for repentance. Now is the time to answer the Lord's call. And so Jesus said, "Whatever your will is, Lord, but could this cup pass from me?" Why did he want the cup to pass from him? This is the cup he's talking about, the cup of God's wrath, his fury. He said, "If it be your will, Lord, I don't want to go there. I don't want to drink that cup, the cup of suffering and the cup of damnation." But guess what? He did. Why? Because he loved you, he loved me, loved John, he loved those that he came to die for. Do you understand that? But there are still people in this world that he has called, but they haven't answered. And we have a job to do. One thing was to answer the call ourselves. But remember, if Jesus is the light of the world, he's called us to be the light of the world. And there are those in your families, there are those in your neighborhood, there are no those in Winston-Salem across the globe. We support 14 different global missionaries involved in global work. Some of them work in this country. But why do we do that? For this very reason. Jesus has given us a command to go into every nation, tribe, language, to give this message, the eternal gospel that this angel has proclaimed to the world. So he says in verse 12, "And this is given to us." This word is for believers. This calls for patient endurance on the part of the saints. What calls? That he's waiting so long, that we have this period, remember, between his coming, his resurrection, and his second coming. There is this long period, it's been centuries now, in which there's a call to repentance, to answer. It's still here. We have work to do, ladies. So it calls for patient endurance on our part, and we are those who obey God's commandments and remain faithful to Jesus. Then there's a fourth, there are three angels, and then there's a voice, a heavenly voice. "Then I heard a voice from heaven say, 'Write: Blessed are the dead who die in the Lord from now on.'" Remember, at the beginning, I said there are seven blessings in the book of Revelation. The first one was in that very first chapter. Blessed are those who read this book. And so we have a blessing even in reading this book. Now, this blessing is our second blessing. "Blessed are the dead who die in the Lord from now on." Does that mean only martyrs? No, doesn't seem to from this passage and from other passages. It means- It means anybody who is in the Lord, you have this promise, you have this hope. You're not dead. You're alive in Christ forever. And so a physical death means for you only a passage to a new way of relating to Jesus. And finally, when he comes back, the whole glorification of all the saints. And so mark this blessing in the notes and in the questions for chapter fifteen. I'm going to attach the document with all seven blessings, so you can see. The other five are yet to come. "Yes, says the Spirit, they will rest from their labor, for their deeds will follow them." This is speaking of us. And so our deeds count, but remember, they never merit our being saved. Only the blood of Jesus, his righteousness is applied to us, not our own righteous deeds. But the deeds are part and parcel of following the Lamb. How can you not be as a servant? He was called to be a servant. So we are his servants. Now we get to the third section. And this is the gruesome part. So I hate it. You don't have to like it, you just have to realize it's coming. And so he said, "I looked." This is the third time he looks. And so each time is one of those sections. There are three sections in this chapter, so it's easy to keep up with. He says, "I looked, and there before me was a white cloud, and seated on the cloud was one like a son of man, with a crown of gold on his head and a sharp sickle in his hand. Then another angel came out of the temple." So before we pass to the other angel, let's deal with the Son of Man. And let me see what my timeframe is. Okay, I've got a little time, so we'll hurry through this. "A man, there was a white cloud, and one seated like the son of man." Of course, you remember Daniel. There's a picture of this in Daniel, in, I think, Jeremiah. So let me see if I can pull over to this part. Okay, so we see from Daniel seven, verse thirteen. "In my vision at night I looked, and there before me was one like a son of man, coming with the clouds of heaven." And so John is drawing on Daniel. Matthew twenty-six, Jesus' words to Caiphas says, "In the future you will see the Son of Man sitting at the right hand of the Mighty One and coming on the clouds of heaven." Revelation one seven, this is in the first chapter. "Behold, I am coming soon, bringing my recompense with me, to repay each one for what he has done." He's coming in judgment. "I turned around," John says, "to see the voice that was speaking to me. And when I turned, I saw seven golden lampstands, and among the lampstands was someone like a son of man, dressed in a robe, reaching down to his feet, and with a golden sash round his chest." And so very easily you can identify this as Christ himself. And so John looked, and he saw Christ seated on the cloud. And he had on a crown of gold, he's royal, he's a king. But this time, he has a sharp sickle in his hand. Judgment is coming. He's come to be the judge, not the Savior. You see, he's already come as the Savior. Now is the time for judgment. Then another angel, that does not mean that Jesus is an angel. It's referring back to those angels that came to give the message before. "Then another angel came out of the temple and called in a loud voice to him who was sitting on the cloud." So now this angel is talking to Christ. "Take your sickle and reap, because the time to reap has come, for the harvest of the earth is ripe." So he who was seated on the cloud swung his sickle over the earth, and the earth was harvested. Okay, hold on to your seats, because I'm going to read ahead and then compare what's being done here. Another angel. So one angel came out to tell Christ, "The time is ripe." Now why is an angel telling the Son of God? You recall that we are told that no one but the Father, no angel, not Christ, knows the time, the place and the time that this is going to happen, that judgment is going to happen. And in this account, we see that the angel comes and tells Christ, "Now is the time." And so Christ sings, swings his sickle. "Another angel came out of the temple in heaven, and he too had a sharp sickle. Still another angel, who had charge of the fire, came from the altar and called in a loud voice to him who had the sharp sickle." I'll straighten this out with you. "Take your sharp sickle and gather the clusters of grapes from the earth's vine, because its grapes are ripe." So it seems like we've got two things going on. One is the harvest of the grain, and the other is the harvest of the grapes. Different people give different interpretations. Some say this both represents, the grain represents all people. So remember, there are four different views of approaches to Revelation. And there are different views. Because of our time limit, I don't have time to go into all of them. So I'm talking to you mainly from the view that we would be coming from. And that view is this, that the harvest of the grain is God's people, his church, that Christ harvests his people. And the angel, one angel comes out, and he calls for another angel to take his sickle, and because the harvest of the grapes is ripe. "And so the angel swung his sickle on the earth, gathered its grapes, and threw them into the great winepress of God's wrath. They were trampled in the winepress outside the city." And this is just so objectionable. "The blood flowed out of the press, rising as high as the horses' bridles for a distance of sixteen hundred stadia." Oh, boy. Okay, what is this making? It's an awful gruesome picture. Well, guess what? The last judgment is going to be an awful gruesome picture. But how many times have we seen Jesus come with his word, asking for repentance? Repent, repent, today is the day of salvation. And now the warning is dire. The time is ripe. And what follows in the next chapter are the seven bowls of God's wrath are going to be poured out on the earth. So what is this blood and the winepress? It's a picture, remember, it's a graphic picture. And it represents the final judgment of those who follow the beast. And so they're going to be destroyed. Is blood real? Is it really going to happen? Is it going to be bloody? This is a picture of utter destruction. So we don't know exactly. Stadia is about a hundred and eighty miles. So we're talking about, you know, it's coming up, the blood is coming up to the bridle. It's complete. It's being done. And so it's as though the sixteen hundred, if you take, if you take the four, which is a symbol of the earth, and I know this sounds like geometry or mathematics, but if you take the four and square it, it gets sixteen. If you take ten, the number of completeness, and square it, it's a hundred. And if you multiply the sixteen by the hundred, you get sixteen hundred. So it's the idea of the completeness, the complete destruction of the world. The new heavens and the new earth are being ushered in. Okay, we've got to quit. So let's quit, not with a picture of blood rising up to the bridles, but let's quit with something that is said in Ecclesiastes. It says this, "He has made everything beautiful in its time. He has also set eternity in the human heart. Yet no one can fathom what God has done from beginning to end. I know that there is nothing better for people than to be happy and to do good while they live." Can we live by this? Can we understand that eternity was set in the heart of man by God himself? And that means for the redeemed and the unredeemed. That for the redeemed, there's an everlasting life in the presence of God. And so the Lamb, remember, the hundred and forty-four thousand were standing with the Lamb on Mount Zion, which represents the new Jerusalem. And then for those who follow the beast, it is that torment, that utter torment that we recognize, and sulfur burning, and torment that is endless. So let us be, have patient endurance with the hardships in this world, with our own sufferings, with the temptations that even come, and draw upon the Lord. And do what we can to make sure that everyone in our family, our neighborhood, this city, our world, knows the perspective that God has and the call that he offers to everyone. Amen. Let me pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this time together, one that is a vision of the security we have in you, the protection we have from you, and the message that you brought and made everyone aware of what lies before us when the old earth and heaven pass away and a new heaven and earth are ushered in. Lord, thank you for your blessings, and thank you that when we die, we aren't dead. We are finally released from this body of death, and we're in your presence. For it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.